All right, so Kim Gilholy. All right, uh, meeting at six o'clock. Welcome. So first up, we have a meeting minutes to sign and meaning minutes to accept. We've already accepted the 14th. Is that correct, Joanne?
Yes, you already made a motion to accept it, but Kathy needs to sign and it was a mess, so I re-typed it. So if you could all just sign again, please.
Perfect. So we're just signing this one here. I'm gonna pass it to you now for the 14th. So then I would make a motion to approve the meeting minutes of June 20th or 2021 as written. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Do you need more time with those, TJ? Do you need more time with those, the 28th? Are you good?
No, I'm good. I wasn't here then.
You were here the 28th, I think.
Was I? Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, all right.
There you go. Um, all right, so now we're looking at line item transfers with the finance committee. So this is our last chance to do those, correct?
That is correct. Well, the last chance is on the 15th, but.
Yeah.
So the public proposed forty dollars in advance.
Yep.
This is your last chance.
Okay.
And so what we have here are four different line item transfer requests. The first two have to do with the invoice of the two invoices attached. Uh, there's Tracy Island final bill there, followed by our final bill from Iron Blenders or Webmaster.
Okay.
Uh, and the recommendation here in front of you is to move them out of the council's best line item and put them over to the appropriate account items that we draw these bills from. And then the last two have to do with, um, snow and ice fiscal year 21 to balance the negative deficit spending accounts. So all we're doing there is just moving funds from one snow and ice related account to another to balance those accounts, make a lawsuit. So that, so that way we don't have to raise it on the tax rate.
Okay.
And that is it.
Um, so let's get the first motion on the floor to move $319.46 from town council account to the town hall miscellaneous. Is there a second for discussion?
Sure. And it's three, um, 1946 because half of that's already sitting in the account.
Okay, so it's just their remainder.
Yeah, we're looking for, it's gonna add.
Any discussion on that one? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Uh, next motion is to move $245.80.
Are they gonna do their motion?
Oh, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. Finance, um, approved of that. Because I get on a roll and then I.
You can have your discussion. Ask questions.
Makes sense to me.
Um, all right, so the next motion on the floor is to move $245, $245.80 from town council to external IT support. Is there a second for discussion?
Second.
Any discussion from finance or select board? All in favor?
Aye.
And finance approved. Um, next up, motion to move $5,915.80 from the highway fuel oil winter expense to the highway plow blades, nuts and bolts. Is there a second?
Sure.
Discussion from select board or findings? All in favor?
Aye.
Finance approved. Um, lastly, motion to move $8,250.35 from snow waste and labor to salt and sand. Is there a second?
Sure.
Any discussion from finance or select board? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
You get what we're doing, right?
Yes.
Okay. We're not moving 22 money around. It's 21.
Um, I'm gonna give this to you right off.
He's like, what are you doing?
Okay, um. Do we wanna go out of order and skip to the, um, to see, since we have, um, Kim, I'm gonna say your last name wrong, Kim Gilholy. No.
No.
That was actually very good. Gilholy, that was great. I appreciate that. I make a motion to go to action item C. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so the motion on the board is to, uh, would be to approve the contract between the town and Kim Gilholy for technical assistance with courting efforts to help the town achieve dementia-friendly designation. So we'll do a second for discussion. All right, uh, go ahead, Kim. Do you wanna tell us a little bit about, uh, the project?
Sure. Well, um, I have worked with the Public Health Institute of Western Massachusetts and in that capacity, um, I've worked with Joshua and, uh, on the community county health improvement plan and then, uh, on the recent grant that you all received, um, to, um, expand, um, uh, uh, people's ability to connect through, um, technology, uh, and from the Bay State Health. So as part of that grant, the plan, um, was for the town of Landford to, um, basically become dementia-friendly and there are several steps that are required and, um, so the Council on Aging and Joshua thought the best way to do that, to get that done, would be through consultancy and the Public Health Institute has, um, gotten dementia-friendly, age-friendly, uh, for the town of Springfield, City of Springfield. Um, so I am proposing to help move that further along by putting together an action plan, um, submitting it to, um, the Massachusetts dementia-friendly, um, and, um, getting the first effort, um, going, which is dementia friends, kind of larger meeting, um, working in collaboration with, um, Joshua and with the Council on Aging.
Excellent. So training will be involved, I'm assuming, for, um, fire department, maybe police department, COA, anyone that might have any involvement with, um, the population.
Yeah, exactly. Yep.
Yep.
Yep. And just to clarify, so that, that Bay State Health Better Together grant to, it was so that we can, um, make sure that our, um, we're getting trouble with our senior population, right? Not our elderly population.
Yes, they'd be.
Sixty-five years of age and older, um, are, get access to it. But there was a piece of that, a cultural humility.
Yes. Yeah, I remember you talking about that. Yep.
We haven't had at that time identified what our cultural humility portion would be. And in this process, working with, um, Kim and others, you know, we, it's much longer story short, but identify.
Yeah.
Dementia being an issue and how we can make our town hall, um, much more dementia-friendly to our.
I think it's great. Yeah.
So we've been working diligently with Kim to identify what that scope would be, which is in the agreement.
Yep.
And so we're happy to proceed forward with working with Kim on this. It's all covered by the grant.
Excellent. Um, so it would be in effect starting tomorrow, um, expiring at the end of December. Um, so covered by the grant is the total price of $2,000. And town council has reviewed this contract and approved it. Great. Um, I don't have any questions. Is anyone here?
No, what are we talking about?
Number one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
We're not supposed to be having this much fun, I'm sure.
Thank you very much, Kim. Here, I'm gonna pass. Um, let me know, Josh, when you guys do it. If it's during, um, the summer and I'm available, I would love to take part in the training.
Definitely keep it posted.
Okay.
Kim, we're still trying to figure it out.
Okay.
That's good job.
Great. Well, thank you, guys. I look forward to working with you and then, um, thanks for taking me out of order.
Yeah, thank you. Have a great night.
Hey.
Bye. Bye.
I've got a patch phone number, but I happen to think they're not home.
Okay.
And I think they're in Petalina or something.
Oh, they're away. Okay. That makes sense. Thank you. All right, so let's put this with my pile here. Next, out of order, we could go to, uh, motion to go to action item D. Is there a second to hire? All right. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Um, so we have, um, an application, a cover letter and a resume here from Andrew. Where's my?
Andrew Shannon.
Yep. Hi, Andrew. I'm assuming you're the one face I don't recognize. Welcome. Um, do you wanna come on up? Dave, do you wanna come on up?
Sure. You guys can get comfortable here.
Nobody's sitting here. Four there, wherever he wants to.
So we have posted for the position of, um, labor operator truck driver at the highway department. Um, and you applied and you're recommending this to the select board.
Yes.
Okay. Um, do you wanna tell us a little bit about, uh, why you're interested in the position, Andrew?
Um, well, David approached me.
Okay.
Uh, he offered a position and it's better paying than the position I'm at right now.
Yeah.
I'm gonna take it.
That makes sense.
You know, I was looking. Uh, I was a little bit unhappy in the current place I'm working right now.
Mm-hmm.
And it was a saving grace that he had come up to me and he's like, hey, I'm looking for a, uh, a guy right now.
Yeah.
Okay. So I put an application in that night.
Perfect. And so you're, you're working for Washington, the town of Washington. Do you live in Washington?
No.
In Beckett. Cool. So you're local.
Yes.
Great. Um, I had a question about, I, I can't find my, I can't pull it up right now, but for some reason, um, licensing, the, what we had put on our job position and then I know you said you're currently, um, taking a course for hoisting.
Um, I had previously taken it.
Okay.
But the closest testing facility is over two and a half hours away.
Okay.
So I can't really take off days of work.
Yep.
To go there because we're busy, especially after the storm.
Sure.
So it's been sitting. I am prepared to take it.
Okay.
I just have to schedule it and get it coming.
Okay.
But he does have a two week.
Oh, okay.
Two week. Two week.
Two week. So in, in that was what we had required on the, okay. So all the licensing is in order as far as what we're looking at. Okay. Um, do you guys have questions?
You're familiar with the type of equipment, why I first got?
Yes. Yes. We have a wide, somewhat wide range at Washington. Uh, the only piece that I'm not completely familiar with is an excavator. Washington currently doesn't have one, but we do have a backhoe and there are similar controls, slightly different control pattern, but it should be easy to pick up.
Well, I think you've got a long time to learn, isn't it? Learn around the minute, so. Uh, you should be all right there.
And you're ready to start?
Um, if I get approved tonight or tomorrow, I'll give, um, Tom the two weeks notice and I can start after the 14 days, which I think is the 26th through 27th.
Okay.
Depending on which day.
Okay.
Have you got, um, mowing license?
No, that's the one that I had taken the course for, but when I took the course, uh, it was in March, which is when everything shut down.
Yeah.
So you're just gonna take the test?
Just have to take the test.
Do you have any questions?
No questions.
No? Um, so I would make a motion to, um, to approve the recommendation, um, and hire Andrew Shannon for the position of labor operator truck driver at the highway department. Um, is there a second?
Second.
So a discussion, I guess, would be, do we set rate? The, the rate would be set per union contract. We don't have any, okay. I just wanted to make sure. Um, okay. Josh, we don't have to do anything except a point, right? The rate, everything is, we're good. Just the appointment, we don't need, or the hire, we don't need a term, we don't need any of that jazz.
No, yeah, just to set the recommendation.
Okay. All right. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All call aboard.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Yeah, I have it right here.
I'm sure they got paperwork for you.
Probably a couple pages.
None of this has nothing to do with what's inside.
Excellent.
After, after you've worked here with James and Matt, you will probably start qualify for that stuff we was talking about before.
Thank you, guys. All right, so let's, um, move back to the one that we skipped, which was the mower. So we're back on action item B, which was, uh, we're gonna take action on payment strategy for a new mower. So TJ, you did some, um, searching. You wanna tell us?
Been in, uh, contact with, uh, four dealers.
Yep.
And, uh, John Deere, uh, came in at about $11,000 if they can get the mower.
Okay.
But you get a 20% off for the, uh, state discount. And then I was on, in contact with Hustler. Their mower was $8,500 if they can get one. And then I went to M&amp;B. M&amp;B had a Gravely that was in their showroom.
Yep.
Which met all our requirements. And then I met with, uh, the, uh, one and egg one there. They, they just won't.
Alan?
Pardon?
Alan?
No. Uh, they used to be over on, in, in West Springfield.
FC Taplin?
Taplin. Taplin. Uh, they didn't have anything that was available. So I decided that we should go with, uh, M&amp;B tractor. We do have an account with them anyways and, uh, their mower, the Gravely, came in at, uh, $7,700 and they gave us $500 for the old one.
For the trading.
So we, we got, uh, $7,200.
Good.
And I don't think you're gonna get Dougie off it.
Measure zero turn, right?
Zero turn.
It's much more, much more efficient than we're on this driving.
Yeah.
Oh, absolutely. And, um, it comes with a maintenance program.
Yeah, that was one of my questions.
Yeah, listen. Before, before you let Doug get on it.
Too late.
Well, I was talking with a fellow today that's gonna sure turn mower. His mower was long and he was tearing it up.
Yeah.
So I was just to remind him, that's all.
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah. Well, uh, when they delivered it, they, they went through the whole action with them and showed them all the ins and outs of it and the maintenance and that. And, uh, I recommended to Dougie and I'll recommend it to you for the first couple of years, bring it down, have them go through it before the season starts, you know, and that way they're, if anything.
Yeah, they'll have the right people looking at it.
Yes, for sure.
Yeah, that's the only way to do it.
Did you have something?
Yeah, does it have roller protection on it?
Yes.
Okay.
Good, that's important.
Yes, it is. Yeah.
So we wanted to talk with finance about, um, Josh sort of had a plan for, go ahead, if you wanna present your plan with.
So and first of all, Dougie's been after me for the last three years and, and trying to upgrade that, that tractor. What year is that thing?
Uh, it's 21 years old.
21 years old. Um, and so finally we had this opportunity. I actually asked TJ about a month or two ago to start looking into it. He's been making those phone calls and finally he came. Um, so anyways, the $7,200, we can do one of two things. Uh, we can take it out of trust or we can, um, put it against our, what we budgeted for, for our capital line item. And I was recommending that we do capital line item since we're able to. That way, the less we touch the trust, the better.
Um, and then it can be used for both, uh, elsewhere if we end up needing.
There's that concern that we've always had where, you know, the equipment is.
Yep.
For Watson Park. It was bought by the, by the trust and if it's used anywhere else, it's not acceptable. Um, at least now, if it is used, we don't plan on using it anywhere else, but.
If we need it to.
If we ever need it to.
Yeah.
Uh, and used by, uh, you know, another employee, then that opportunity is there, that flexibility is there, although I don't see a need for it at this moment, but, you know, who knows what the changes might be in the future.
So my personal thought was to lean towards that option, using capital. Um, I don't know, what were you guys thinking?
I was thinking on capital.
Me too.
Yeah.
We've gotta be careful with that endorsement.
Yeah.
Yeah, the last weekend, I mean, right now you've got fixed costs coming out of the trust, right?
Yep.
Which is the, the salary for the person that maintains the park.
Yep.
Uh, there's a small electricity bill that we pay out monthly for, to every source. And then you did work on a couple of projects and that's the other reason, right?
Yeah.
We just take, take now trees.
Yeah.
Um, you know, there's other things that, you know, we just did the wall.
Which looks great, the tree.
They all came out of trust. We have to slow this down a little bit.
Yeah, I understand.
Seven thousand, $200 if we can.
Mm-hmm.
Um, that'll be worthwhile.
Yeah. Okay. Oh, question, Kim?
Yeah, I just, um, it's fine. I just wanna be sure that, um, thank you, Josh, for pointing out about the trust. Uh, the circle commission is trying to always sort of see where we go with projects and that's fine that, because I know Doug does different things. But we have to be very careful that if he's working at Watson Park, that comes out of the trust. If he takes the tractor up to do something else, which he has not, was not supposed to do, then that time is not clocked toward Watson Park. And I think sometimes he's just on the tractor and he goes wherever he wants and just submits. I don't know that, but that's just been brought to our attention in the past. So I think if you're going to set it up this way, it would just be really helpful to be very clear with him as to what, how it's gonna work.
I think you and I are on the same page.
Yeah, I, I think we are. Thank you.
All right, um, so you need, uh, so I would make a motion to, uh, pay the $7,200 to MB for the mower out of the capital account. Is that a select board motion or is that a? So second for discussion. Sorry, is that select board?
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, I just, I just.
It's reserved, that's fine. I get confused.
That everyone is in agreement. And what, what source we're taking.
Now, does the finance committee have to approve that also?
They don't, but I do want us to maintain a habit that whenever.
Yeah.
An anticipated item like this comes up, that finance committee, I mean, it's great that they're here. If they weren't here, the recommendation would be to send it to finance.
Yeah. And have, yeah, seek your opinion.
Separately discuss it, look at your sources, send back a recommendation. But in this, in this scenario here, there was one left.
Yeah.
And it happened to be the one that was the best price and we didn't want.
Yeah.
We didn't want, um, somebody else to buy it underneath us. So we went and got it, but certainly, you know, the options are there. It's just making a decision on what option we're gonna go with as far as how to spend, where to take the money from, so.
I couldn't believe how little equipment is available.
Yeah.
Even, you know, I, when I went down M&amp;B to, to sign for the mower and I'm looking at their yard and it, and it's like empty.
Yeah, it's crazy.
It is.
All right.
Yes.
So we don't need a, a finance agrees with this then? No.
I mean, no, but it's good to have a.
I would just note that, yeah, the, we sought, um, finance opinion and received their opinion. Uh, on favor?
Aye.
Aye. Good. Um, all right, so we have, uh, the updated 21 through 28 open space and recreation plan, um, to endorse. So I read through that today while I was at the library.
I didn't make copies. You guys have looked at this before and it's very large.
Yes, it is.
So I didn't make copies for everybody. If somebody needs to see it, can you pass it around?
Um.
So.
Go ahead.
Uh, Ken called me as I was on the line. I'll let him, or you can let him take the floor.
Yeah, thank you.
But, uh, once, once he does his high level overview and you guys discuss it, in your packets, there's just one pager here.
This, yeah.
If, if you guys do endorse it, um, Kara, just if you can sign this.
Yeah. Hi, Ken, how are you?
Hi, hi, board. How are you? Good evening. Um, thanks for having me today. Um, so as you recall, the town received an MVP action grant and from that grant, um, the products were a resilient master plan and updated open space and recreation plan and some regulatory framework, um, to work with some of the boards and commissions, uh, in town. And, um, with regards to this particular act, uh, action, um, the open space and recreation plan, um, as you probably know, um, the last time it was updated was in 2004. And so these past eight, nine months, um, we worked with Wildscape Designs and they worked with an advisory committee, um, which was made of the conservation commission and went through the process that is outlined, um, in Massachusetts, Massachusetts general law with regards to what needs to be in an open space and recreation plan. And so just some brief, um, factoids about OSRPs. Um, it's a state mandated planning document that's updated every seven years. And as I mentioned, it follows a process, um, that is through the division of conservation services, um, which also includes, um, an input and participation component, which, um, as you know, PVPC has been around town with regards to the various workshops that we've done um, and focus groups and, um, work that Wildscape Design has done with the advisory committee as well as a community meeting. And so with that said, it's an opportunity to assess and plan for your open spaces and recreation resources and facilities and decide how to get there. Um, usually, uh, communities do adopt and endorse an OSRP to, um, because they're required for, um, grants, um, conservation and recreation grants, um, park grants, recreational trails, grants, land grants. Um, and, um, that's one of the reasons why communities do OSRPs and I think, um, you know, it was identified early on in the process that that was something that the town wanted to do. Um, there are required section components and, um, probably the most important thing is the analysis of needs. Um, a resource protection needs, community needs, management needs, potential change of use. And with that, the Wildscape design with, along with the advisory committee worked through inventory using map analysis, using, um, updated census data, using, um, mass GIS data to identify certain lands and, um, and identify, um, protected lands and, um, ensure that the inventory is correct with regards to what the state has versus what the town is aware of. And so the document as, um, as it was mentioned, it is a large document, so over 150 pages. And, um, in there is the inventory, in there is narrative about the town, um, and, and it's how it, it came to be. And then in the latter half of the plan are the identified strategies and goals that the town, um, through its advisory committee and through town, the town, um, community meetings, identified certain things that, you know, the town should pay attention to, um, with regards to possible future regulatory changes and/or, um, parcels to, um, explore further for further preservation and/or, um, a change of use. Um, one of the big things, um, and this came out, came through again in the resilient master plan was the protection of large tracts of open space and productive farmland, if there are any. Um, you know, the town having, having worked and, and working with the planning board and identifying solar, um, development as something that has come, you know, as a, one of the big, um, one of the big issues with land use, um, especially in Blandford, that's something that came through. Um, something else that came through the Blandford ski area, um, identifying and working through conversations with, um, those folks to see what, you know, what if anything, uh, can be done, uh, to address that. Um, let's see. So I think if you recall, um, some of the ideas. Um, let's see, so I think if you recall, um, some of the ideas that have come through this twenty twenty-one update have come from the two thousand four, um, OSRP. And the goals are, um, typical, and they align with the Resilient Master Plan. And, um, since I wasn't as involved with the OSRP and am, you know, getting the town to, um, endorse this, a lot of the same ideas have come through in the Resilient Master Plan. One of those things being the goals, preserving Blanford's small town atmosphere and character while protecting vital water resources, upland buffers, and large blocks of contiguous forests. Um, some of those, um, objectives and strategies that are outlined in the plan, um, do support that. Number two, conserve and steward Blanford's mosaic of forests and farms. It's working landscapes for the benefit of all present and future residents, visitors, and wildlife alike. And those strategies that are identified there, um, help support that. Enhance existing recreational opportunities and access within Blanford while expanding access to recreational opportunities currently unavailable in town. So it was identified that you have other players in town that offer those types of recreational opportunities. To continue to engage them, um, one of the things that came loud and clear, both through this OSRP update and through the Resilient Master Plan, was how to interact with Springfield Water and Sewer with regards to those lands around Cabal Mountain Reservoir. And, um, you know, this aligns again with, uh, with the notion that that continuous engagement, um, should occur. And, um, you know, I think, understanding with the, the products that have since been received during this process, to, to continue working with that and identifying those parcels and, and really seeing what can be done to, um, provide that, those recreational opportunities. And, um, you know, I think to conclude that, again, this has been a community-led process. Um, and it, it does, um, it does conform to the requirements as suggested by the Department of Conservation Services, who will be reviewing this plan. Um, as you are aware, the town is under the, uh, community review portion of this process. So on the town's website, there is the draft of the current plan. Um, and I will be sending an email and copying the town administrator on an email to the Department of Conservation Services and their reviewer for the open space plans, um, to start that preliminary review. Um, and while that's happening, things like these support letters will come through. Um, the planning board, uh, approved the plan at its last meeting on the seventh. Um, and, um, yeah, so those are, those are the next steps, and, uh, I'm available to answer any questions that you may have.
Great. Um, thank you. I, I read through the plan, and I, I agree wholeheartedly with the, uh, the, it came through loud and clear, the frustration, I think, from residents regarding our, our water sources and lack of, um, access to them. There was a paragraph, I was trying to find it, uh, that it was interesting because it says in one hand that one of the most noteworthy, unique features we have is our abundant supply of clean water. And then there's a paragraph that says that we don't have any access to water for recreational use for fishing, kayaking, or swimming in Blanford. We have to go to other towns. That just seems so wrong. So, you know, I'm hoping that we can make that a priority going forward.
Yeah, and I, and I think, you know, um, with the leadership of the select board and your, um, Conservation Commission and Planning Board, I think that there's opportunities both in this plan and the Resilient Master Plan that, that alignment of those two plans will hopefully, you know, um, create the understanding that this is something that the town really is seeking to, you know, really get further on and understand its resources and understand its access to those resources. So, um, you know, if there are ever opportunities to help, um, you know, engage further, um, those are certainly things that are definitely, um, demonstrated in these two plans.
Yep, absolutely.
The one immediate, I think we talked about this before, but some sort of resource manager.
Yeah.
Right, that can come out of this probably, uh, even if we, you know, we know we have this pilot investment for the next twenty years. Would it make sense to invest in such a person?
That's managing our, yeah.
Part-time or full-time, that's the, the town's land manager, um, and works directly with the conservation as an agent, as well as the planning board members, um, with maintaining the trails, and also being that liaison between Springfield and town.
Yeah.
Whenever these issues come up and, uh, you know, even forward-thinking, right? So like, looking at what lands we should probably be looking at and recommending going after, you don't have any of that.
Yeah, I think it's really important, and, and we just saw, we have something on here with Springfield's coming up, right? Where they're purchasing more lands and putting in, yeah. So I think we've been buried with this and haven't really had a voice for the last however many years, you know? So if we can afford to be in a place where we can, that would be wonderful. Um, anyone else have questions? Katie?
Yeah, I just have a question about, um, I heard Ken mention, um, uh, recreation and parks. And I just want to, again, remind people that Watson Park is an historic landscape. And so, um, we just want to be sure that that's included, uh, that it's not, I mean, it's an open space, obviously, but it, it, it does have a historic designation and the commission, historical commission is charged by the state to preserve and protect. So we just want to be sure that happens as well as, I, I don't think in two thousand two Shepherd Farm that has open space plus the historic building would have been included. And I'm quite sure that conservation has, you know, has updated that. Um, but again, the building itself is historic, the land, obviously, as an historic event, but it's still an open space plant. So I just wanted that to be updated.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, um, so then I would make a motion to endorse the updated twenty-one, twenty-eight draft of the Open Space and Recreation Plan. Is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, Ken. I really appreciate all the work that you've done. This is, uh, quite a feat.
Yeah, you got two, two, two plans. I mean, that's really awesome for the community, and I'm really glad to have been part of it and glad to be working with the planning board, should you sign that contract tonight, um, for this next year, um, to maybe address some of those, um, recommendations.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
You too, Ken. All right, so next up, we have review and received communications from, uh, DEP regarding application submitted to them by Springfield Water and Sewer to approve, um, mass EP for the commission to acquire certain lands or rights of land in Blanford for public water supply protection purposes. Said land in question being identified as lot two and lot three of that, four oh three parcel six two, uh, located on Gibbs Road with the water to litter Little River. So this is a notice that this is happening, and we have, we're able to.
So it's a hearing.
Mm-hmm.
It's a hearing that's coming up, and like I do, we call communication once I pass my desk.
Yeah.
Agenda so that you don't know. Um. I attached, I'm thinking it's the right information. Um, the properties barred. Lot two. And lot three, that's four oh three.
Yep.
That is the one. You see this is the property card. All four oh three is zero.
This is the same property that we, we passed on first rate of, correct, first rate a few weeks ago. And this is the same one that we said, no, we don't want to purchase.
And we don't want to purchase it, but I don't want to see, or lose the property, I don't believe it.
So once, once they, once they do get possession of this, and I did meet with, uh, Harold, because we put that from R D today, we don't date our, our pilot payment, um, with Springfield. So.
But we.
You'll get something.
But we, but we lose taxes either. Because of.
The same tax as the home.
Because they'll put it in sixty-one A, I think. Mary, go ahead.
I was under the impression that this, the house and a small number of acres, maybe two or four acres, was sold to a private buyer.
I thought that, yeah, that it was split up and that the land was.
No.
Is the land going to Springfield, maybe, and the house?
It's all true, as far as I'm.
Oh, no, true.
I, you know.
The hall still owns it right now.
Oh, you. Well, that hearing is coming up, scheduled for July sixteen at ten AM. It's virtual. For anybody that wants to participate in that hearing here, which.
Should we talk to our, um, attorney that's selling with Springfield Water and all about this? If there's, if this is an opportunity for us to at least get our voice heard that we're frustrated with this process? And that.
I can share with her. I don't, I can see what she said. I don't know if there's much we can do. Nevertheless, oh, I know.
So is this them, them want to wind up all any more than a third of Blanford?
Yeah.
I mean, we ought to be a little realistic here. Uh, I know we can't afford to purchase it, and they can because they have a mortgage of forty-five million dollars. They can do more or less what the hell they want, but. How far is Gibbs Road from Cabal Mountain?
Long way.
So it has to do with the water supply.
The water shut immediately. You know.
It doesn't say how large, though.
You know, that farm has stood there for a lot more years than I've been around. And I don't believe anybody was poisoned from that farm being next to Long Pond and the water running into Cabal Mountain. Now we have a filtration plant. I don't see what the big deal is for protection of the watershed. Uh, I think it's, uh, I think it's just a land grab by show.
It looks like, so it says a parcel contains five hundred and sixty acres.
Yes, and that goes all the way down almost to, uh, Blair Road.
So that'll bring them up to over nine thousand acres.
Top of the hill from the, where you go up Jethro Jones Road.
Jethro Jones Road, when you get up to where the logging landing is.
And there on.
From there on up, and that's where.
Future city property.
And that's where the cemetery is for, uh, Gargel's trap.
And they have, so Nicole is their resource manager, and she's the one that manages, that's making all these recommendations. This is why I say, I think, you know, in order for us to put ourselves in a stronger position to maintain what we have here and maintain our interests, we need somebody like a Nicole representing.
Yeah.
On, on our payroll.
I think we should at least touch base with our attorney and say, listen, this, this came across our desk. Is this an opportunity for us to, you know, try to put a foot down a little and say, you know, you, you already have nine thousand acres in town, a third of our town, et cetera. This is gonna, you know, how much is it gonna affect us tax-wise? And is there anything that we can do? I mean, if it's a hearing, at least we can get on record that we're disagreeing with.
Oh, there's, there's, you could definitely.
Nothing else, you know?
If you can get a handful of residents to jump on that.
Yeah.
Call.
Oh, I'm sure we can, given the feedback from the master planning and the open space.
Now, they're, they're taking all, over all the barns and the house and everything.
Yeah, that's the whole, if you look at this.
That's the one that Fontaine bought.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Fontaine's right there.
So that's the other question, is it historical property, is it?
And plus all the land too.
Question, Katie?
Well, I, if it is, uh, Fontaine, that was a person linking farm, so there is some historical nature. But beyond that, if this is including the cemetery on Jethro Jones Road, that would be an archaeological site. And I think, uh, maybe you can check with, uh, Shannon and PVPC, Josh, but that would be significant, I would think.
Question, Mary?
Yeah, um, we, we passed on the first right of refusal when it was initially offered. Now, if that sale fell through, do they have to ask us if we want to refuse again?
Or, or.
Done with it.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm correct in that, because this is Fontaine, that was, um, that was, um, who's the gentleman that owns the car place down in? He was talking to us at the annual town meeting. He owns the.
Oh, John Dunn.
That was Van property. That's, I was mixing, yeah, I was confused.
But, uh, Hall bought that property and owns it now.
Yeah, this is currently owned by Hall.
So I think that refusal that we put in is.
Lost.
Yeah.
But it's still, it's not in chapter sixty-one A yet, I don't think. I don't know.
But again, uh, for as many years as that's set there, and it hasn't, it was a working farm, which it isn't anymore. I, I really can't see the, the reasoning behind Springfield grabbing some more of our, our land.
Frustrating.
And doesn't it impact our water supply on more than Cabal Mountain, isn't that?
You would think.
Isn't that so different?
But that's not something we want to purchase either.
Now, Tom, going back to, uh, a couple of maybe ten years ago, wasn't there, uh, a, a thing about, because Fontaine wanted to put animals, he wanted sheep or something on there, and he was served with a D C to desist. Do you remember from who?
I believe it was the city of Springfield got the D E P to do it. The other thing we got to remember is we're gonna, we're gonna fight the city of Springfield all the way through with this, just like we're going over Cabal Mountain.
Well, we just have to continue to be annoying. We can be annoying.
Now.
We can ask my kids if we need any, you know, insight as to how to be annoying.
All right, it's not Springfield City and Sewer, all right?
Springfield Water and Sewer.
Water and Sewer, it's a separate entity.
Sure, but they have major, you know.
Well, like, water power was.
Yeah, but it's like our water department, it's an enterprise.
Yeah.
But, uh, I don't know whether that gives them any more or less authority other than what they give themselves.
Well, well, that's the whole thing, and, uh, you know, I'm looking at it as they're trying to take over the town.
Well, it looks that way. Every time a piece of property that's anywhere near the watershed is vacant, they jump right on it.
So our next meeting is after this meeting. This meeting is taking place on the twenty-third, no, on the sixteenth.
On the sixteen.
We're having a meeting on the nineteenth.
And, and you can't access the meeting, because I tried to register for the meeting and I couldn't get anywhere.
Well.
You can just click on the link.
It's probably because it's just not open yet.
It's not open yet. So on that day and time, you go with the link. You don't, you don't have to pre-register ahead of time.
Oh, is that right?
Um, so Josh, can you do that with the attorney and then just maybe reach out to us?
That's this Friday?
Send us, yeah, send us some information. Okay, I was gonna say, put it on action item for next meeting, but that doesn't make sense because it'll be over.
It's gonna be a move for me.
All right, um, so we're gonna move on to the, uh, accepting, so I would make a motion to accept the quarterly animal control activity report. Submitified the animal control officer, uh, second, uh, second. So we, she had five, uh, calls and five responses. Uh, any questions?
No.
Oh, Mary?
What happened to the dog and the fence issue down?
I haven't heard anything. Have you heard anything?
Did it get fenced in?
No idea.
I think we're gonna be.
On virtual.
There was a date was determined.
Whatever happened.
They would check on it.
Can we follow up on that, Josh? Just, I don't really want to, but I guess we should.
Well, it would be nice to know. We'd be in trouble.
I know, I know, I don't want to do it. Okay, um, next up, review and take action on the contract between town and Pioneer Valley Planning Commission for the planning board assistance for FY twenty-two. So this is what Ken was talking about. Um, this is just continuing, um, the work that PVPC has been doing with our planning board. Um, it, this contract has been reviewed by attorneys. It would last the year, uh, services through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. The amount is the seven thousand five hundred. The amount is the seven thousand five hundred for support services, um, which is the same, I believe, as what we did last year. I think it's pretty necessary considering what our planning board has been trying to, trying to work through. Um, is there a second?
Yeah.
He beat you to it. Uh, any questions or discussions on that? On favor?
All right.
Hi. All right, I'm gonna sign it at seven. I, I just thought tomorrow's my brother's birthday, but scared me for a second. All right, uh, next up, we have discussion about select board reorganization. So since we've got, uh, any member? PJ? We discuss, do we want to reorganize ourselves currently? Uh, I'm the chair, Tom is the clerk.
I think we keep it the same. I, I'm for keeping it the same.
What are your thoughts, Tom?
I, I agree. You've done a good job as chairman. If you made me chairman, your foot would be sore by the end of the year. So you like this as well, keep it.
I don't mind, I'm happy to do it. I'm a little picket.
She's good at it.
Thank you. All right, discussion is kind of broken here. Thank you so much, PJ. Discussion head.
Make, make a motion.
I'm making a motion.
For another year.
Yeah, you said it, you better make the motion.
I, I can't motion myself. I'm making a motion to appoint Tom, the clerk, for another year.
All right, now I make a motion to appoint Kara as chairman.
So is there a second?
I second it.
Okay.
All in favor?
I.
Look at how we have a left.
That was, that was quick. Okay, unfinished business. We have the Attorney General Extension of the ninety-day review period, Article thirteen from the special town meeting regarding the road bond bylaw. So they want to sit with it for another ninety days?
Yeah, it's just, it's a communication piece from a, a, a discussion between Attorney General's Office and our town council. The Attorney General had requested forty-five day extension.
Okay.
On that bylaw, we
Yep.
voted on. I said, I don't see any reason why we should say no, so
Yeah.
so town council went forward and accepted the extension.
Okay.
But I'm just bringing it to your attention till you're done.
Right, yeah. Okay, thank you.
I don't know if I want to say no to Attorney General.
They've said no to us, I mean. Uh, do you have any other unfinished business?
Yep.
What do you have?
We, we have to go back and reassess the George Millard Road. It washed out again over the heavy rains this weekend. And the highway department had to go and, and do some restructure there. We're spending a lot of taxpayer money on that road and we have to actually take action now. We're gonna have to do something. And, uh, we can't go on private property and fix their problem. And it's private property that's causing the problem on the road. Uh, I gotta.
Two pieces of private property.
Pardon?
Two pieces of private property.
Right. Uh, Tony Workhoven called me and he said he spoke to Dave about his wife having to go to the hospital. So Dave had to send some, uh, a crew up there to straighten out the road so she could get out.
Who had to go?
Tony.
Well, then he should be made aware that he created the problem. Because when that water used to run across, we, the water used to cross, touch his driveway and go into that same swale and go through that culvert and it dissipated down through that pasture. And he made us block it off, so that now that water's all gonna run down that hill.
Who made it?
Tony did. Because he said we were ruining his pasture. I don't know how the hell you ruin a pasture, but anyway, that's the story with that. The other part is we've got to get Mr. Stutz to agree to cut a swale from his property boundary with the highway diagonally across so that it grabs that water and runs it down over the hill and lets it go into our drainage a little more gradually. Cause right now, that water comes out of his land, it comes down the hill and some of that might be alleviated if they make sure that the water can get into the upper side of that driveway culvert. But we gotta slow some of that water down somewhere.
Yeah. Well, that's understandable, but the thing is, is that it's against the law to put running water across the road.
Ease much from the property owners to do this, like we did with Bob Kidd. Once he understood what we were trying to do way back when I did it, he was happier than anything. And I think we could use that as a precedent for what we're trying to do here. I think it should be pursued legally.
Well, that's what I was just about to suggest.
Dave, what are your thoughts on this?
There's an awful lot of water coming off his property, awful lot. If you look at his driveway and you look to the left of it, there's a small swale.
Yeah.
And at the end of the swale is that small culvert.
Yeah.
And that water comes up, come from his house and theirs. And it comes down from his driveway, his upper driveway. It's a disaster up there. I just went through again. We'll be there for a couple more days or so, we have to.
So do you think an easement, that's okay, do you think an easement in order to fix it is, do you think that that legal route is, is a route that we?
I, I, I think some form of legal should be addressed to him on that because it's his water coming off his property.
And do we have data collected to show that? I mean, I, I would imagine legally we'd need pictures and?
I, I have a video of it.
Okay.
And it, it, it's a lot of water. And where it comes down alongside his driveway to that small culvert, it just blows right straight across right down about the inside.
Okay.
And it's, the road's like maybe fifteen, fifteen feet apart away.
Yeah.
But you got like an almost eight foot of just eight tenths drop off where the water came down through.
Yeah, that's all, I'll undermine. I took a ride out there and I, I was amazed, I wonder how much shot.
Funnel it all the way down on one side of the road.
Yeah.
That, that, that could fix it, but we have to defuse it.
If we get an easement, that means that all that's doing is legally allowing us onto the property to repair the situation. Is that correct?
Right, it would have to be written off that Dave could take his men in there, the equipment and put a swale in to turn that water and put it further down the hill uh, away from that sharp corner. One of the problems is when you make water, make a ninety-degree turn, it gets a little unruly and that's where you that's where you start losing rope because it starts doing this and it just keeps getting wider and wider and wider.
So do we need to seek an easement for Tony's property as well?
Well, we could try, yes.
Well, he didn't, he didn't mind the water going there. It's all the tons of gravel that are down there now.
Finds and all that for.
I don't think we put much gravel down across his pasture.
I don't know. It, it looks pretty substantial when I looked at it today, but.
Yeah, but it had, water hasn't run in his pasture for...
No, we're talking when you, when you get down and where the, where
Yeah, the bottom of the hill.
And then you got that, when you walk down into that woods there.
You get down to bottom of the hill.
Oh, yeah, there's, there's a lot down there.
But water runs downhill and it takes the dirt with it.
Yeah.
Well, that's what we gotta try and fix because, and like you said yourself, we gotta slow that water down.
The only way you're gonna fix that is get some good weather, shape the hill up, pave it, pave ditches and hope.
I, I think we should first get in contact with Tony and, and just sit down and have a chat with him.
Okay.
Um, and see what his ideas, how he feels about it, you know? You, you, you talk about some money putting that into that road. If it's, if we can just take a culvert, you're ready to cross the street, you know, and have it run that way, that'd be nice. But most of the water, we need, we need to find out where is that coming from out of this, out of the gentleman's property, by the house.
Okay, um, so the first step, would you meet with Tony and have a conversation with him?
Yes, I will.
Um, but it's not just Tony, it's also?
Exactly.
Okay.
Yes, I don't know, that's by myself.
Yes. Okay. Um, and then if we need to proceed with seeking an easement, I guess that would be the next step legally? So that we can make a more permanent solution?
Yes, because I, I remember Rainey and Mr. McVeigh, we talked, talked to Mr. Tedson about it.
Yeah.
Which, it was his responsibility to figure out what to do with, with the water coming off his property. And he was gonna hire a contractor to fix it. That was, as you look on the notes there.
Yeah.
That went out through December of, uh, uh, twenty. And right now it's twenty-one, it's a move, twenty-one. And he seems to have no effort, done anything yet. And you gotta see when he bought a driveway, it's coming out of your road, out of your, out of your area and down, and just tearing off the road.
It must be so bad right now too. Okay.
Well, I'll, I'll show you pictures later.
Okay, so, um, if we wanna add that for unfinished business for our next meeting, we can touch base. See where we're at. Um, Josh, do you have more unfinished business first?
Yeah, just an update on the Sperry Road situation. Uh, it looks like, yeah, so it's, well, apparently the surveys and deeds provide reference to the existence of the road.
Yeah.
Um, I guess so, the, what they call the Runyon deed specifically references the road going all the way to the north line of Massachusetts to the Terpite. Unless you do further research and you have documentation of the, you know, the town discontinuing that road. If one doesn't exist, that...
Okay, so at this point, I feel like we've done some research that belongs to us. We gotta figure out what we want to do with it. I don't, I mean, you, Tom, you talked about getting it up to par with just seasonal.
Yeah. But the other thing is, I've got to go back, we've got town reports clear back to the fifties, so I gotta look back in the sixties and see when my wife was on the planning board, they come out with a bylaw that if you wanted to develop anything on a road such as that piece of South Street, it was up to you to fix it. And so I wanna find that and get the date that it was voted at town meeting.
It's in the bylaws.
It is.
It's listed.
So there you are, where, there's our out.
What is it again? What, say it again?
If you wanted to any kind of development on a road such as that section of Sperry Road, then it's up to you to fix it, bring it up to town standards.
Really?
Show me the bylaw.
It's, it's in the bylaws and the date that it was voted and approved at town meeting is referenced at the end of the law.
We'll, we'll look into that shortly.
Okay.
Do you want me to go get it?
No, I, I mean, tomorrow we can connect.
Okay.
That would be great.
Thank you, sir.
But if it doesn't, or that's not the out.
Yeah.
It's there.
Okay.
And there's the seasonal option, I don't know how good that will be, or there's just the option of you bike.
Well, I like the idea of telling the gentleman that we're glad to have you in town, but saying that you want to log it. And so for us that
Yeah.
we feel that you go ahead and bring it up to town standards. That, that was done over on South Otis Road and it stopped a big development from going in over there.
Wasn't there, uh, didn't, wasn't there something like a stumpage fee or something when they were logging back?
I think that has to do with chapter sixty-one, doesn't it?
That, that had to do with chapter sixty-one?
I think so. Cause once you start logging your harvesting, you're making a, you're, you're, you're making a profit off of the land that you have put into chapter sixty-one. So I think you have to pay your fair share.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay, so, um, then let's do, let's take a look at that bylaw and if that is, um, applicable, then we do nothing. And if it's not, then we have to start looking at pricing for seasonal.
Bring it up to seasonal use.
Okay.
The log trucks really don't care
Yeah.
a lot about a fancy road as long as they can get over it.
So let's put that on unfinished for next meeting then. Uh, do we have any other unfinished business?
Yeah, just to, so the high, so we have another role, uh, in the highway department we need to fill.
Yes.
Um, so there were two candidates, one of which didn't meet the minimum criteria, but was in the process of.
Okay.
Um, so I guess what we ultimately decided, you know, we're thinking, well, you know, ninety-day probationary period, he can get within the ninety days. But then we said, if he's not coming in with the minimum criteria is met, you know what I mean, that maybe not. So I think what we're gonna do instead is just repost it.
Yeah.
And hopefully
Okay.
you know, he go.
Yep.
Hopefully he'd be able to take the test sooner rather than later, qualify.
Yeah.
Right, but they should be opening that stuff up now.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, right, that's what we, I would imagine by now.
Yeah.
But right now, the last class they had was July first, or that was down on, on holiday in a town.
Yeah, they said UMass is gonna open theirs again.
Good.
I haven't heard.
That's where the testing was.
Right.
Yeah, I haven't heard yet.
I heard something about it the other day that UMass is gonna open up again.
They better hurry.
Which would be great.
Okay. Um, do we have any new business? Uh, we, I see the discussion for library hours, Mary?
Before you jump into that, if you don't mind, Mary.
Oh, Josh is gonna. Sorry, yes.
Items off my list here. There's a, we have a couple of previous fiscal year, um, balances on EverSource as well as, um, Verizon bills. Um, I don't know if you know, you know, they, they just forward the, the balances owed to the next bill to the and for the last three years, we've always tried to go back to find the original invoice of where that balance comes, come from. And it's difficult. So I think at some point, the accountants, the finance committee and the select board is gonna have to make an agreement. They're small, we're talking about a couple hundred bucks. It's not
And just pay it and move on, yeah.
Pay unless we find an original invoice. But I did speak with Eric Kincher today and, um, you know, we had our monthly finance meeting. And just said, hey, look, if we get the finance committee, select board, everybody to agree to just pay them, get it on a warrant, annual town meeting, just get these things paid. You know, just to be clean. But, uh, when Joanne and I first started, we took care of a great deal of it, but somewhere as you go further back, it's really messy.
Yeah.
And it's hard to find the original invoice of where those debts are owed. And working with the EverSource and Verizon is
Impossible.
is difficult.
Yeah.
Um, but I just wanted to put that in your radar that, that, you know, we'll have that conversation soon, as, as soon as I organize it for you.
Okay.
Uh, next week, uh, Monday is your financial forecasting presentation.
Yep.
The auditors are also gonna be there to present the FY twenty-one audit, um, as well as
Exciting.
but that was very appropriate. Um, tomorrow, in case you don't know, um, it's a retirement party for Sergeant Gary O'Brien at Chester Town Hall.
Okay.
Um, I didn't write down the time.
Twelve.
Okay, there you go.
It's at twelve, okay.
Any of you guys are available?
Twelve Chester Town Hall with the, it's, it's Tuesday. Okay.
And then also, uh, the August ninth board meeting, we're looking to try to organize your joint select board meeting with Tom Chester. Your quarterly meeting for police.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
Okay.
Well, don't forget Blanford thing.
Uh, yes, so we have to get, buy tickets, is that the plan?
I think you can do it there.
You can get them there, okay.
I'll be a little bit late, but I'll be.
I'm gonna take the kids, so.
How can we market it to some more Blanford people now? Can we, what can we do?
He's got it on his news. I've got it outside. I don't know. Short of sending a mailing.
Who's on Community Facebook page?
It'd be cheaper to just buy their tickets. It'd be cheaper to just buy their tickets.
Um, is there like a post or something we can share, does Westfield have a flyer or something?
Yeah, I mean, I can put on the newsletter, the electronic newsletter or something.
Okay.
You can just take that, copy and paste.
Okay. Yeah, I just think it would be nice to get the word out and get a good crowd, you know, people are itching to have something to do, you know, it's, if it's a nice day.
What is this?
Kara singing in the national.
No, Kara's not singing. Um, Westfield approached us, they do, um, days for different towns and you can, you can have your, your town honored on that day for their baseball meeting.
It's a baseball team.
Oh, the baseball, okay.
Yeah, so Blanford Day is gonna be on the seventeenth, um, I, is, um. I should check with Bonnie Lemme, don't we have, uh, someone from Blanford singing and then. We're, someone's gonna throw out the first pitch, who's gonna throw, Josh, you're gonna throw out the first pitch?
I'm gonna be a little bit late, but I'll be there, I'll probably be like twenty minutes later, so.
So you can't throw out the first pitch?
That ball, honor falls on you.
Throw it out.
I can throw a softball pitch, which is like that.
We promise not to laugh.
Roll it, roll it like a ball.
Oh, I, I mean, I could do a mean softball pitch, but I, I can't do a baseball pitch. Um, okay. I'm gonna figure that out.
And that's July seventeenth?
Yeah, it's a Saturday.
Six, six P M.
It's at six P M. Oh, shoot. I thought it was in the morning, I've got a wedding that day.
July sixteenth?
I can't go.
Friday?
Saturday.
Saturday, seventeen.
Well, if it's the sixteenth. I don't think I can make it.
It's the seventeenth, I can't make it, I got a wedding, um, who can throw our pitch out for us?
Uh, do we do a pitch?
Yeah, that's part of the thing, Blanford, someone from Blanford throws the first pitch.
I have two grandkids there that both play baseball.
There you go.
They live in Blanford, I don't know.
Do we wanna have, um.
They want an official.
Regan throw out the pitch?
Okay.
Can we get, we need a Blanford T-shirt for it.
Oh, that'd be great.
Recreation department.
Yeah, there we go, we have, we don't have a, I have like a Blanford Water Department T-shirt she can have. Let me get it to you, so at least she's got something to represent.
Blanford tier T-shirt, whatever.
T-shirt to Joanne, it's on my list, alright. Oh darn, I really thought it was in the morning, I thought I could go.
Where, where do they hold the gang, of what park?
Bones Field.
Yeah.
One up the hill. Yeah, it is now, yeah, it used to be, um.
Yeah, I went high school there.
I went to Mills School there.
Uh, Mary, so, uh, extending library hours, do you need budget?
Well. Yes and no.
Okay.
Um, in preparation for next year's budget, we will need additional funding to pick up the two hours. What we have approved is to maintain our Saturday hours from ten to two rather than ten to four, so that takes off the two least busy hours on Saturday.
Okay.
And move them to Wednesday morning.
Okay.
We have had a huge request from moms with toddlers and ta- small kids, plus our senior citizens wanna be able to come in. When we're not full of school kids in the afternoon too, so. We wanna be open from, we will be open starting August first on, on Wednesday is from ten to six straight through, that's eight hours. So, what we're doing is increasing our total number of open hours from twenty six to twenty eight.
Okay, and you have it within your budget?
It's gonna take some financial, financial finagling.
Yeah, okay.
We are pretty sure we can handle it for this year.
Okay.
And it's about sixteen, oh, just over sixteen hundred dollars, but for the following year. Which we're not even worried about yet, with the minimum wage going up to fifteen dollars an hour January first, twenty twenty three. That's, that's gonna just complicate things, plus the additional two and a half or two and a quarter percent increase, so just sort of.
A heads up, yeah.
In your ear. Um, and if necessary, we do have some funds that we can use to supplement.
Okay.
So.
Okay.
We're, we're good, but you should be pleased that we're getting more.
Yeah, it's great that we need more hours, I love it. The summer reading program's been wonderful so far, we were there today and with your grandbabies and. It's nice and crowded, and sorry, I'm gonna just turn this off, um, yeah, the kids are, the kids are loving it, they've got a great number of kids, even with like camps and stuff, there's been a lot of kids there.
We, we had twenty seven kids. The first week. And when I reported that to the state, they were absolutely.
Right, for such, and we draw from other towns too, and then the teen night had a decent turnout too, that personally did. Charlotte psyched about that, cause I took her to the first summer reading, she's like, I'm too old for this, mom. Sorry.
What, what was it, two or three years ago? I brought fire truck down. Oh god, the kids are a wall.
Yeah, they did love that, that was fun. Alright, um, and then we've got our, uh, expense report for this, which is, I don't even know if we need to bother looking at it, cause we're twelve days into the new year.
Yeah, I don't think there's enough to. To get nervous over it.
So, um. I think we're all set, unless anyone else has new business? That I like to hear. Alright, yes, I know, you're tired, okay, um, we were gonna, we'll be adjourned the meeting at seven nineteen.